This harmonium is not the best one. This doesn't seem to work. Can somebody give me the other one please? Here's some of the keys, they're all funny. Yes, see? Yeah. Okay, this works. Let's try this one.
Are you ready? There's a moment.
No, no, do it. So this is it, yeah. Just do that. Yeah. And that's it.
That's it, thank you.
Let's check for harmony and okay, we'll turn it up a little bit. Can somebody switch off power?
Okay.
Cuckers. She's funny noises. Krishna 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 I go and pray my God.
Pray for me.
Ah, the king.
Jai.
Samavira Bhakti, the king.
Jai.
Go and pray my God. Can maybe somebody take the harmonium over? Well, just give it to me. Um, maybe we can ask the man to move over this side and the ladies coming a little closer. Is that alright? That the man move over to this side and the ladies come a little closer. I'm a personalist, I like to see my audience. And if you sit there in the corner, I can't really see that much. I will put the books I published up here, just in case somebody who was not here on Sunday and didn't see them yet. Were you here on Sunday?
No.
No. You also not? Okay, wow. So I do meet a few people today, okay? Om Namah Shivaya, Manasaya, Manasaya, Shalakaya. Chakshya, Militanda, Natas, Meeshi, Govinda. Shri Tanya, Manu, Bism, Stab, Dhamm, Yudhaka. Swayam, Vatbaka, Ramayana, This, Vatdikam. Maan, Vishnab, Rakishna, Bista, Uddhani, Shimata, Bhakti, Pranta, Smam, Nittamani. Namaste, Savasvaridive, Gobhanipachayane, Vishesheshunivari, Peshatari, Sutari. Anshakapati, Veshak, Kibhas, Nibevacap. Paditanam, Pavane, Bhiyo, Vaishnavi, Bhiyo, Namuno, Namah. Jaya, Shikashate, Tanya, Pavuditya, Nala. Shriyadvaita, Gara, Shiva, Asadi, Oh, Bhakti, Nala. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, 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 Hare, Hare. Hare Rama, Hare Rama, 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 Hare, Hare. Well, since there's a few people here who I did not meet on Sunday, maybe I'll quickly introduce myself a little, since we are meeting the first time. So my name is Devakida Eridasi and I am originally from Germany, but I haven't lived there for about 40 years. So I left Germany in 84, traveled the world looking for a higher purpose to life and then in Australia in 85, that's when I came to Krishna Consciousness. And with a week of meeting the devotees, I moved to the Rameshini Ashram in Sydney. I was four years in the Ashram there, getting the basic training of the Krishna life. And then I was married for 10 years. The devotee. He was born in Australia, but his parents were from Latvia, so he knew the language. And two months after we got married, we went to Latvia to preach. That was in 89. So that was the perfect time when the communist system fell apart and things were gradually opening. So we started the temple in Riga, it is still there, the same place, in the middle of the city. And we had quite a dynamic time there. We had 65 pilgrimage houses in the temple and about 30 pilgrimage arenas. And that kept us very busy. And yeah, we had the first vatsyaches there. We went all over former Soviet Union, to Moscow, Petersburg, Minsk, Vatsyacha, and so on. So it was a very adventurous time in pioneer spirit. So and then my husband left Krishna Consciousness and left me, took a break from me and spilled the wine. And that was in 99. So and from then on, I moved on to the next phase of life. So I didn't always look like this. When I was married, I had hair, even if it's in the moustache and then it's nice. So I went to that phase also. But then I felt it's a nachname that me belong. So since 99, I'm basically living out of a suitcase and constantly traveling. Tomorrow I fly to Spain. Come and sit down. And I spent five months per year preaching in India and Bangladesh and seven months all around the world basically. Australia, New Zealand, sometimes in South Africa, went this year. Last year I did all two, and the US, Canada, all over Europe, so many countries in Europe. Yes. And I have published five books because, um, yeah, my, I've been preaching in Bangladesh and I've learned so many interesting things there, about our Krishna culture. How our Krishna, for what's it meant to be left naturally, spontaneously. So and that transformed my spiritual practice immensely. And that inspired me to establish an institute for spiritual culture. I will look at it if you like afterwards. So I'm based in Myapur actually, I spent three months here in Myapur. And I give courses there. And I conduct a holy name retreat in Egachakadham. Egachakadham is my calendar's birthplace, very special place. So over Christmas, if you want to have a nice experience, come to Egachakadham. I arrange everything. All you have to do is register on my website and be in time in Myapur. And I arrange the bus, accommodation for sharing everything. Yeah, I spent three months there, I spent in Myapur teaching all different courses. And now I'm putting these courses in book form. So each book is a 15-hour course, which I usually give in Myapur. Because not everybody can come to Myapur and take all these courses. So that's why, so all right, let me put them in book form and books can just reach so many more people. Yeah. And that is kind of my humble mission, I'm working on the next one, which will be the Vande Posta Ashram. The title is the Vande Posta Ashram, Meeting Death with Joy. That's the purpose of the Vande Posta Ashram, to meet death with joy. Yes. So that's a little introduction about my humble self. So today we want to discuss an intriguing topic about the man-woman relationship. Right? That's what you came for, is it? Or not? How to please a husband, how to satisfy a wife? This husband-wife relationship is some, some mystery to most of us. We're trying to work out how this, the two are meant to function and enhance each other, complement each other. It's actually good to get a little bit of education on this because some of you are not even married, so that's good to first get some education. What am I getting myself into here, you know? Because that's the problem, we often get no education, no training, and that just somehow is leading to a relationship and have no clue how to perform their roles and so on, you know? So yeah, actually, the topic is more deeply discussed in this book and also in that one. At the end, I can quickly tell something about the books. So it's just a little section from these books. And actually, usually I discuss these topics over two sessions. One is how to please a husband, one is how to satisfy a wife. And of course, the men always like to come to the session, how to please a husband and they often shy away when it comes to how to satisfy the wife. So today we have only one session, so we kind of shorten that a little bit and condense it, you know? So before we can even start understanding how to please a husband, how to satisfy a wife, we have to first more deeply understand their natures. Right? Otherwise, how do you know how to please them, you know? Yes, some men-women's nature are very, very different. Very, very different. Because according to Krishna's recommendations, they're meant to play different roles. So of course, in today's society, things are rather upside down and topsy-turvy and all a bit blurry and, and, and sometimes we realize how far we actually are from Krishna's system and recommendations, sometimes miles away, you know? So but it's good to get insights, how, how Krishna's system is meant to function, you know? And then we can decide how close or far away we want to be from Krishna's system, you know? But if we don't even know, then we go along with all the modern, current, new ideas of propaganda and this whole gender thing is becoming a little bizarre these days. Yeah, my God, you know, that, yeah, anyway, we don't want to get into that. But yeah, it's what people tell me, you know, that really the kids are, you know, told, "So who do you want to be today, a boy or a girl?" And, you know, it's completely mixed up, you know? Yes. So let us look first at the man's nature and qualities. So let us first understand what are the purifying duties a man is meant to play? There's three duties, no matter whether he's in spiritual life or in material life, that doesn't matter now. So what are the three duties of those spiritual souls who are in man's bodies?
Protection and provide?
Yes, very good, to protect, to provide, and we should ask the man. Protect, provide, and what's the third one? Yeah. I like to call it to take charge. Because some people, my say, I'm not a leader, you know? But actually, it's built into the man's nature that he wants to take charge, you know? So yes, protect, provide, take charge. So and it's fascinating to discover how Krishna puts exactly the right natures and qualities into the man's gross and subtle body, so that he can play these roles, right? So I actually like to compare the man's body to a certain vehicle. The woman's body also, we'll park that for later. Man's body, I hope you will like it. The man's body I like to compare to driving a tractor. Very, you know, down-to-earth, basic, no big decorations and all that. Wants to move mountains, can pull three trailers behind him, right? Wants to achieve things. So that's kind of the man's nature, driving a tractor. And looking at the roles he's meant to play to protect, provide, take charge. So the gross body perfectly designed, so he can protect. That's why man's body is as a rule stronger. Stronger muscles, broader shoulders, bigger feet, and, and, and so he can play those roles. And the intelligence is more rational, right? Because when you fight the tiger, you can't allow yourself to get all emotional. So it's more rational. And also man's body comes along with a stronger false ego, sorry to say. And that stronger false ego motivates a man that he wants to take charge. If it wasn't for the false ego, he may not want to even play that role. But somebody has to play it, right? So that's why Krishna puts a stronger false ego into the man's body. So he wants to play that role, right? Yes. I mean, there's also a few other little details like man's rational intelligence and emotional intelligence, he cannot function on both simultaneously. Whereas a woman can because she needs that for her role, you know? But a man can only function either on the rational or on the sensual-emotional level. And he can't so easily pull himself back. So that means if a man is caught on the sensual-emotional platform, he can't pull out, you know? If he's like attracted to a young lady or something, he can't so, once he's caught in that, he can't so easily say, "Hey, hang on, what am I doing here? I'm married, I've got three kids, this is nonsense." You know? But he's willing to risk his, you know, his whole career, family life and everything, this for women. Yeah. And that nature that he can only either function on the rational or on the emotional is also there because again, when he fights the tiger, you know? He has to stay on the rational platform. So that's why he can only function on one. But it has a few little disadvantages, you know? Yes. So now woman's body, very, very different, you know? What are the three purifying duties of a woman?
Naturally.
Hmm?
Care.
Yes, she's the caregiver. Yes, she's the caregiver, but before she gives care, what's, what's she doing?
She's the caregiver.
Yeah, of course, she should have that, but no, it's three, three duties which even on the roadie ladies are playing. What are women doing that man can't?
Give birth.
Give birth, yes, somebody has to do it. Yeah, so that's one of the ladies' roles, giving birth, then raising the children, being the nurturing, the caring person. And what else, the third one? So to give birth, to raise the children and be the caregiver in the family, and the last one is maybe not so easy to guess. What is the very important role?
You go through them?
What? No, it's true, but it's just a little detail. It comes under caring.
Support?
Support, what else? And also support. Yes, that's part of the nurturing, caring.
Is he playing the side role?
Huh?
Playing the side role and letting man play the main role, I think.
Yeah, you're getting closer.
Harmony in the...
That's part of the caregiving. Now, Parvati says in the Bhagavad Gita, what does he say? He says a woman should be the power of inspiration to the man. She's meant to be the auspicious source of energy and inspiration to a man, especially the husband. That's a very important role because women are given a very powerful shakti. And a woman can bring the very best out of a man, spiritually and materially. Or if she uses that energy in the wrong way, she can destroy a man's life. That's the power of a woman. Yeah, woman's energy much more powerful than man's energy, Parvati says that in the book, you know? Yeah, so now, to give birth, to be the caregiver and raise the children and be the power of inspiration. So again, woman's growth and subtle body is perfectly designed, so she can play these roles and she wants to play these roles, right? So first of all, growth body perfectly designed to give birth. And then subtle body, that's why we women have a more emotional nature. Like the men have the stronger false ego that motivates them to take charge. So the women have that emotional nature and that motivates them that they want to be mother as, as a woman. The only reason why women don't want to be mothers is because they, yeah, want to enjoy their independence and, you know, because when you're a mother, you have to serve. And this is not so popular these days, you know? You're not going to serve, they rather want to enjoy and be free and any better. But that's why Krishnas gives that emotional nature. So she wants to be a mother because otherwise which woman would want to be a mother? You know, being nine months pregnant, then giving birth, pretty painful experience, then running, running, running twenty-four-seven just to, you know, raise the child. And I mean, a mother really sacrifices herself, like anything, if she is a good mother, right? Yeah. Yeah, actually, for a woman, it is a very natural way how to learn to become selfless and, by being another. Yes. Parvati says, the love between mother and child is the purest form of love to be found in the material world, you know? Because the love needs to serve selflessly, so when the mother... Of course, it's all, also not completely selfless, deserving because there's some expectations, some emotional attachment and, and, and. But it is the purest form of love we can find in this world, you know? Yeah, so, and that emotional nature inspires to play that role. And to play that role, there's quite a few other qualities we women have. Like we have a very good intuition, much more. We have a much stronger intuitive intelligence than a man has. Because again, we need that to be a mother, right? A mother knows why the baby is crying, whereas the father has no clue. He doesn't know and doesn't even know what to do with the baby, but the mother knows, she's got that intuition, right? Yes, and what else? Yes, let's have a look at the role of being the power of inspiration. How do we play that? Are there any suggestions? And now, oh, hang on, I didn't tell you what the, what I'm comparing the woman's vehicle to, which vehicle? So woman's vehicle, I'm comparing to driving a sports car. Tractor and sports car. You will find the whole topic in more detail in this book. So, sports car means very powerful energy, few little decorations and extras, right? And most men like to have a sports car, huh? Yes, they love sports cars. Yes, so, and power of inspiration, how do we play that role? Any suggestion? How do we inspire a husband?
Maybe when I give a sad, maybe a pill or something like this.
Maybe?
By purity, chastity and people.
Okay, yes. Yeah, I mean chastity and purity, very important qualities for a woman. But she mainly inspires him, there's two points. I mean, I have so many quotes, but I don't think we have enough time to go through different parts of the Bhagavad Gita, you know? But it's all in the Bhagavad Gita, actually. So there's two main points how a woman plays that role of empowering and inspiring a man. Because that's an interesting point. There is one purport in the Bhagavad Gita in connection with King Prirata and his wife Ahismati. Come inside if you like. Even if you only want to take dharshan and we're not planning to attend the seminar, you can come. But if you want to take, attend the seminar, that's even better. Yeah, so in this purport, in, in the story of King Prirata and his wife Ahismati, Parvati explains how only very bromineic men, they don't need that feminine energy in their life to be inspired. And all other men do. So this is a very important point. In other words, for a man to be married or not, it's not just a question whether he can be celibate. But there is that more subtle aspect there. Whether he is really so bromineically natured that he does not need that feminine energy in his life to be empowered. I feel we have not really understood this properly, even though it's all in the Bhagavad Gita. But people just read over it and they don't understand, you know? Yes, yes, yes. So that's a very interesting point that not only we women need the protection of a man, but also the men need that feminine energy in their life to be empowered and inspired and motivated. So Krishnas ranges things perfectly, that both actually need each other. And in these modern days, you will hardly meet a man who is so bromineically... ...he does not need that feminine energy. That's... ...a man should take Sanjas. Because they don't need that feminine shakti in their life, you know? But all others do. So that's already interesting. And this is exactly the reason why a wife should be so old to a man. Because only when she takes the humble and supple position, then she can give her shakti to him and empower him. Yes, I always like to give that example of a rocket flying into the sky. So the fire is underneath the rocket, right? And that shoots the rocket into the sky. It's not next to the rocket and it's not above the rocket, but it's underneath. And that shoots the rocket into the sky. So that is really the reason why we women are meant to be, you said, behind. That's also what Parvati says, he says, behind, in the background, he says, in the background of every great man is a woman. So it's in the background, not, not next to or ten steps ahead, but in the background. Because again, then a woman can give her shakti to him. That's a really important thing to understand. And now, in the modern days, because of this equality, what happens very easily is that we women don't want to give our shakti to him and make him the hero, but we compete and we want to be the hero ourselves, right? Yes, it's natural because of this whole equality propaganda. And that actually weakens a man. That is so frustrating for a man when he does not get that shakti from, from his wife. If she uses her shakti for herself, you know? That, that's why in Kali yoga, the men are getting more and more weak and irresponsible because the women can empower them anymore, they don't look up to them as their heroes, you know? Yes. That's not a problem. And I mean, when we're talking about it, in, in, in this book, you get deep insights. This whole man-woman equality was actually a conscious propaganda coming from America. Just to exploit women for sex love. That's why this whole equality came about. So women can more easily exploit it for sex life. It relieves the man from their beauties. That's behind it, you know? Then a man can say, "All right, we are equal, oh, you're pregnant, oh, really? Okay, well, it was nice with you, see you later, we are equal." It relieves the man from their duty of maintaining, protecting, providing for the wife or for the woman. Yes, so it was a conscious plan coming from America just to make sense greater communication easier available without commitment, without having to care and provide for the woman and the child, yes? Parvati could see it all, yes? Yeah, so, you know, we have to be a little intelligent and see through these things, you know? Not think that any modern idea is great and the best and leads to success, you know? Yeah, so understanding a man's nature, you know, that he wants to take charge, he's driving the tractor. Actually, a man wants to be the hero for a woman, yes? I mean, anybody who is married here, um, may have that experience, you know? It's, yeah, it's built into the man and that inspires him to protect and take care of her nicely and provide and, and, and. Yes, so a woman empowers and inspires a husband by taking the humble and supple position, looking up to him like a hero, and then she gives her shakti to him, empowers him. Yeah, so very, very important, that point. There is a very heavy purport in the Ninth Kanto. I thought I better don't read this. You may shoot me down, but it's Parvati, you know? I mean, it's not me saying it, it's Parvati saying it, yeah, yeah? Oh, he speaks such strong words. I mean, if you wanna, if you ladies want to read the purport at home, I can give you the number of the quote, if you want to write it down. It's very heavy, I'm not sure whether, um, I mean, in places like America, I don't even talk about this topic. But, you know, Ireland is a little bit more conservative still and more traditional and especially looking at the audience here, most of you are from Indian background. But the heavy, heavy purport is Ninth Kanto, Third Chapter, Verse Ten. Nine, three, ten. It's a story with Shavana Mooney and Sukanya. Shavana Mooney was this old, ugly, irritable Mooney, cranky. And Sukanya was a beautiful young princess. She was so young, she could have been his granddaughter. And Parvati describes how, how they got along here, you know, in the American. And Parvati makes very strong points there that a wife must be trained to be humble and please her husband in all regards, Parvati says. She should serve the husband like a menial servant, a man servant, and please him in all regards. And then Parvati says, this is the... Should I read it? Yes? Yeah? You ready for a little heart surgery? Yeah, I mean, I usually feel, you know, if we talk about the man-woman, husband-wife relationship, we have to really read this and for some people, it's like a thunderbolt and they, you know, yeah, they can't digest it. But I mean, I have faith in Parvati's words, there's a reason why Parvati says these things, you know? Yes, yes. All right, you taught me and tut. Okay, the verse goes as follows. Shavana Mooney was very irritable, but since Sukanya had gotten him as her husband, she dealt with him carefully according to his mood. Knowing his mind, she performed service to him without being bewildered. So the verse sounds pretty cool and normal, nothing special. But now, you listen now, Parvati unpacks this, my God. This is an indication of the relationship between husband and wife. A great personality like Shavana Mooney has the temperament of always wanting to be in a superior position. Such a person cannot submit to anyone. Therefore, Shavana Mooney had an irritable temperament. His wife Sukanya could understand his attitude and under the circumstances, she treated him accordingly. So that was just the introduction, so now it comes. If any wife wants to be happy with her husband, she must try to understand her husband's temperament and please him. This is victory for a woman. Even in the dealings of Lord Krishna, who's his different queens, it has been seen that all the other queens were the daughters of great kings. They placed themselves before Lord Krishna as his maidservants, so now we can say... So now we can say, well, if my husband was Krishna, then I also would do that. But unfortunately, he is not so, sorry, I can't. But now Krishna is teaching us the principle, you know? However great a woman may be, she must place herself before her husband in this way. That is to say, she must be ready to carry out her husband's orders and please him in all circumstances. Pretty strong. Then her life will be successful. When the wife becomes as irritable as the husband, their life at home is sure to be disturbed or ultimately completely broken. In the modern day, the wife is never submissive. So strong, you know? Parvati, it doesn't say, oh, in the modern day, the women are not submissive or something, no? The women are never submissive. My god, he knows what's going on. And therefore, home life is broken even by slight incidents. Either the wife or the husband take advantage of the divorce laws. According to the baby law, however, there is no such thing as divorce laws. And a woman must be trying to be submissive to the will of her husband. Heavy, heavy, heavy. And now again, Parvati knows exactly, you know? Westerners content that this is a slave mentality for the wife. That's the western thought, you know? Yes, for the wife. But actually, it is not. It is the tactic by which a woman can conquer the heart of her husband, however irritable or cruel he may be. See, ladies, it's just that tactic. It's just that tactic to conquer a man's heart. A wife can conquer a husband's heart through her service, through her shakti, by pleasing him. She's got that power to conquer a man's heart. But a man cannot so easily conquer a woman's heart. And Parvati says, however irritable or cruel he may be, you know, wow, that's the power of a woman, you know? Even if he is cruel, irritable, through his submissive and devoted service, she can conquer and transform actually a man's heart. Yes, that's why we have the example when a, when the wife is devoted and the husband is not so much devoted. If she knows how to serve and please him, she can conquer and transform his heart and sooner or later he will also become a woman. But the other way around, when he is devoted, she is not. That's a much more difficult situation because he just doesn't have that power to actually transform and conquer a man's heart. Because also he is, he is more to go out and earn an income. Even though of course today things are a little mixed up. But according to Krishna's system, that's the husband's duty. And it's also again build interest nature that he actually wants to provide. It gives him a deep satisfaction to provide for his family, you know? Yeah, so very powerful purport, you know? Parvati makes this point with free women, you know? Serve nicely, we can conquer his heart. That's why we often here in Zen is for the first ten years in married life, the wife should say yes, party, yes, puru, yes, puru, yes, puru. And then for the rest of their lives, he says, yes, my dear wife, yes, daily, yes, daily, yes, daily. But it depends how expert the wife is to actually conquer his heart through her service. Yeah, it may not only take ten years, but maybe twenty years, depending on her expertise. And actually interesting to see the same thing in a perfect way is going on in this virtual world. Krishna, Shri Mati, Vada Rama. Yeah, so we have Radastani. So Shri Mati, Vada Rama, she knows how to please her Krishna. You know, she's willing to fully sacrifice her very self for his pleasure. And therefore, she controls the supreme controller. Right? Not by telling him what to do and what not to do, but simply through her service. And the same principle is there in a somewhat perverted reflection in the material world, you know? Yes. And a wife, if she humbly serves in a devoted way, she controls actually the husband. And then he will want to do what she wants, you know? Yes. But it's important to understand that we don't conquer his heart, we don't inspire him by telling him what to do. The more I tell him what to do, the less he will want to do it, you know? As a man, I was married for ten years and nobody taught me all these things. So I remember whenever I, I, in all friendship, I was saying to my husband, well, why don't you do it like this and this and this? Then his answer half jokingly was, guess what? I just wanted to do that, but now you told me, now I can't do it anymore. That was his answer. Now you told me, now I can't do it anymore. Anybody knows this feeling here, any of the men? Yes. They're too shy to admit it. Yeah, it's, you know, as we said, he's driving the tractor. So he wants to be in the front. He wants to be the number one, you know, so. And he wants to be the hero. So he's not the hero if the wife tells him what to do, then she's, he's not the hero. You know, and then the male nature doesn't wanna do it. Even though he actually was planning to do it, but the more she says it, the least she wants, he wants to do it, you know? A husband cannot follow in the footsteps of the wife. Wrong rudder. Yes. So very important for us women to understand. The more we want to push him and tell him and we think this inspires him, but now it will do the opposite, you know? It will do the opposite, yes. Yeah, so that's one aspect how a woman is the power of inspiration. And another aspect is also through her feminine beauty. That's why, just as I say, the wife's duty is to make herself beautiful and decorate herself, you know, and make herself attractive. Because that inspires a man also. You know, when he comes home from work and he sees a beautiful wife there who cooked a nice dinner and so on, then he feels it's all worthwhile, the struggle of working out there and so on and so on, you know? And so that we can, we women, actually, we women are meant to bring color in beauty into life. Yes. And that's why a woman's body comes along with a stronger bodily identification. Because that inspires us to make ourselves pretty and decorate ourselves with earrings and makeup and this and that, you know? Yeah, so that's one of our roles also that we are meant to bring color and beauty into life, you know? Yes, looking at my watch, seven o'clock. Yeah? Well, let me say a couple more things before we move over how to please the wife, satisfy the wife. And there's two things, very simple things. A wife should say as often as appropriate. First one is, what a good idea. And second one, well done. So, so simple, you know? Of course, it shouldn't be artificial or something, but, you know? Whenever there is an opportunity, what a good idea, well done. You know, how does that make a man feel like? Yes, I'm the hero, well done, what a good idea. Solid, that inspires, that motivates, right? Does it? Yes. I mean, by the way, even with tier research has shown how women channel the male energy in an uplifting and constructive way. For example, all the, the men who are involved in criminal activities, you know, like drug dealing or the heavy drug dealing and crime aggression, whatever, they're usually unmarried when a man, yes. They're usually unmarried, you know? So when a man has a woman in his life, that, yeah, brings the better side out in him. Even, you know, mundane sociology and research, they have come to this observation, you know? So it's interesting how, how a woman really, yeah, makes him well behaved and, you know, and responsible and beautiful, you know? Yeah, so that's how much men also need a woman in their life, you know? And I often, I mean, see because I'm always analyzing and, and, and I often can observe these things. If men are not properly situated, they're not properly in the brachy, brachyasham. And they're out there shining, you know, book distribution, hey, nah, man, and that. And they're also not married. They're kind of in between, you know, they have a job, but, you know? Then a man easily asks himself, oh, what for? You know, what for going out, working hard, what for? You know? And then he's not really trying his very best and, and, and he's just kind of prodding along, you know? But then when he has a beautiful wife in his life and, and a couple of kids and all that, so that motivates a man immensely, you know, to be responsible and then, you know? So yes, what a good idea, well done. I mean, even I use this formula in my dealings with men, you know? Yeah, it empowers them. If we say, what a good idea, well done. Thank you, well done, you know? Um, so now, one thing that I'm describing this all in, in details in the Kali Yoga Book. Um, we women have to learn the tactic of making our idea his idea. Yes. And all it requires actually is to let go of this false ego gratification, that it was my idea. So we women actually practice on the husband to let go of our false ego, yes. Yes, so let us give an example. You know, let's say a husband comes with a crazy and ridiculous idea. And sometimes they do, you know? Let's say he says, let's go to the Himalayas on the weekend. Crazy idea from Dublin going to the Himalayas for the weekend. So, but what will the clever wife say? What a good idea. Initially, she will welcome the idea, you know? And that requires controlling the tongue. Because the false ego pushes us to immediately say, what? Are you mad? How can he come up with such a stupid idea? Don't you know, boom, you know? So, yeah. To control that, you know, is a challenge, you know? So the wife says, what a good idea. So initially, the husband feels, yes, she likes my idea, I'm the hero. And then a little later, the wife says, oh, you know, I thought a little more about it. And I somehow think maybe it's a little far away here, maybe it's already cold here. And, and then, and what about, what about going to Bhaktivilantamana instead? What do you think? And she hands it back to him. She just humbly voices her concerns rather than jumping on him and talking him out foolish and stupid ideas. You know, she initially welcomes it, then she humbly voices her concern and makes maybe another different suggestion. And then she hands it back to him, what do you think? You know? And wow, what do you think, how we will respond? No, how will a man respond? Most likely, he will say, yeah, actually, you're right. Right? She almost invites him to agree, but because she hands it over to him, it's his conclusion, right? Yes, yes. It's his conclusion, yeah. So like that. I remember once I saw in my Bangalore was saying, what's one family? And he said to me, wow, my wife serves me so submissively and such a chaste and devoted way. Of course, if I have to make any serious family decision, of course, I'm gonna ask her what's her opinion. Of course, she's my better half, you know? And then she said to me, whenever my husband asks me for my opinion on things, I simply say, well, if you ask me, I would like to do it like this and this and this. And again, she hands it back to him, she says, but anyway, you or my husband, you decide. Whatever you decide is fine with me. And she means it, she doesn't just say it, but she means it. You know, she humbly voices her opinion and she hands it back to him. Whatever you like is okay. So again, what do you think, how the husband will decide? Most likely, it's like she wants, boom, confirmed. So most likely, he will do what she likes, you know? Because it's his decision then, you know? She handed it back over to him, it's his decision. Whereas if she's all demanding, oh, you know, I want like this and forget it, we can't have it like that. And, 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 and this will not invite a man to fall. The desire, you know, and it's not, he is not in control, he is not in charge. So we women have to learn to make our desire, our decision his, his decision, his idea. And as a man, all it requires to, you know, to do the false ego. Um, just the last word before we go over to the how to please a wife or satisfy a wife. Of course, saying that a wife should take the humble and good position does not give a man the right to be abusive. You know? This has to be expressed, you know? It doesn't mean he can somehow torture her and abuse her and be nasty to her and this and that and this, or beat her or whatever, you know? No, he's meant to protect her because she is his power of inspiration. She is the jewel. she is the jewel. So, very precious jewel we protect, you know? Yeah, because otherwise we don't care, a projectful power of inspiration, even more rare, power of inspiration. So one's a man understands how a woman is serving like the lunch lady in the house, bringing all good fortunes and blessings and then, so the evil will fully kill nicely from her, be abusive or, you know, suppressive or something like that. Okay, so let us say a few words about how to satisfy a wife. So, as we mentioned already, or let's go to the main important thing, the fact that we women are more emotional by nature. So let's say, a man gives protection, we said, "There is three kinds of protection, matthias, virtue, and emotion", so let's ask the man, "What do you think which man of the three is the most important?" Virtue, emotion. Most people say virtue, but no, indeed it's emotional protection. That's the most important one. Yeah. Because virtue protection, we have YouTube now, we can get some inspiration from so many sources in our life, to internet especially. And matthias, wow, we women are also pretty clever, we can also learn a little bit. If it helps to read. But emotion, actually that is one of my purpose of family life, to fulfill the emotional needs. Yes, men also have emotional needs, not only women. But women have more emotional needs. And this is for many men a challenge, how to fulfill the emotional needs of a woman, because they don't have these emotional needs so much, you know? And therefore, yeah, it's not so easy for them to relate and sometimes they may just think it's some silly game or something, a waste of time or something, but no, this is really an important part of what happens to the leader, he fulfills the emotional needs of a woman. If it's wrong. So, let me ask the man, "What do you think, how are we fulfilling the emotional needs of the wife", who is married here? Let me see, a few of you. So, let's ask the man, "How do we fulfill the emotional needs of a wife"?
What's an emotional need?
Hmm? What's an emotional need? Okay, just see. We are not even clear about that. Um, what was my definition which I found in Prabhupada's books? To make the mind cheerful. So the emotions are connected with the mind. Right? We can call it also mental health and stability, mental well-being. Right, that the mind is cheerful and satisfied. That's the emotional need. And as I said, men also do that, do have emotional needs. That sometimes white brahmachais actually change the ashram and become gryhouses because they just feel emotionally a little dry and there's not that close companionship maybe there and so on, you know, so and they feel a little lonely or something and they need some affection. We all need some affection, you know? Even dogs, cats want some affection, they come and they want to be cuddled and caressed there and all that. So we, we all need some affection, you know? But women more than men. Okay, so now, what are, how, how do we fulfill the emotional needs of the wife?
Give time, listen to her.
Hmm. Hmm, exactly, give time to listen to her. Oh, this is one of the hardest things for men, right? Do you know this book, "Men are from Mars, Women are from Venus"? Yes, it's a good one. Before I published my books, I always had a few copies of it in my suitcase. When I met people who struggled, they're married, I was cleaning them, the mouse and reading the book. Yes. So, hearing, listening to the wife, you know, because we women, we like to share. A woman digests things by talking about them. Whereas a man, he likes to go in his cave and think about it, you know? But we women like to talk about things. So, let's imagine, you know, that the husband comes home, wife comes home, always at home. So, and she had a stressful day, some anxieties, some disappointments, so she simply wants to share that with her husband, right? So, but then, very often, how does he react? Who said that? Yeah, the man like to fix things, he is the mister fixer. He gives the solutions. "Why don't you do it like this? You should have done that". So, how does that, how does that make a woman feel like? She doesn't, a woman, believe it or not, we women don't want solutions. We want to be heard and understood. So if a man offers the solutions, that makes a woman feel like he's not hearing her, he's not empathic, he doesn't understand what she's going through, right? So a man, and I don't want to ridicule the wives by saying this, but a man simply has to learn how to make the right noises. Hmm, "Oh, really? Oh, you poor thing, I know how you feel. Don't worry, I'm next to you, I'm at your side and I will give you my support and this and that and poor thing and don't worry, we will work it out and, and that". Yes, so just to make the right noises, not to come with suggestions and solutions and, "Oh, why didn't you do like this", "Oh, that's because you did it like that", the woman doesn't want to hear that. She simply wants to be heard and understood. And interestingly, you know, when a woman shares her negative feelings, a husband usually feels it's his fault. Because intuitively, he knows that he should make her happy. And if she is not happy, he feels it's his fault. But actually, hopefully, the wife doesn't mean that, hopefully. But he intuitively feels it's his fault and that's why many husbands, they get very irritated. You know, when a wife shares some negative things because, yeah, he feels it's his fault, you know? But yeah, very important aspect that a husband has to take the time to hear her and listen to her and show some, you know, show some empathy that he understands what she's going through and then. What else? How else is he giving emotional support?
I think that husband should pamper the wife.
Did you hear that? Yes, Prabhupada says it. I have this one quote, but it is printed in such faint colors, so hopefully I can read this. The husband should give all comforts to the wife. She may not be uncomfortable in any way. They, they want food, clothes, some ornaments. Oh, good. Yes, in so many ways, the husband must give to keep the woman satisfied. In India you will find that the poor men, they will give what is called iron bengals, lead bengals. They cannot provide silver, gold, but bengal must be there. Bengal must be there. So therefore glass or lead. She will be satisfied with good saree, good bengal, good foods and some children. That's so proper, again and again he stresses that, that husband is responsible, that she is comfortable and that she has everything she needs and she has some nice decorations because after all we said it's her duty to decorate herself. So the husband is meant to provide it. He's not meant to say, "Oh, you go and get a job and buy whatever stuff you want", no, he is meant to provide. Of course, there may be limits to how much she can provide, you know? So ideally, this should be discussed before two people get married because the culture and etiquette is that once the two are married, she has to be satisfied with what he can provide. You know, because otherwise again, he's not the hero. And this is another thing where often, you know, arguments are made a lot happening that the wife is unsatisfied or he doesn't have enough money, "I want to go to India, I want to go here and there", and this and that. You know, and then she is demanding and so on and that puts pressure on the husband and, yeah, and he doesn't feel encouraged because he's not a hero. So once husband and wife are married, she has to be satisfied with whatever he can provide, you know? So that's why this should be discussed before. And I mean, in India, my God, sometimes it's a little, yeah, a little for us Western people, a little too, yeah, money orientated. That often the women in India, they put a figure on monthly salary, so many lakhs rupees per month. And if you cannot provide that, she's not even looking at it. So, yeah, this is maybe a little the other extreme, you know? But yeah, a wife or a possible future wife should look at this, man, provide what I need and want in my life. Of course, these days, often the women are also working, that's a whole different topic, you know? Especially when a child is small. Mother's role is so important. My God, first five, six years, a child needs another. All our mental, emotional, psychological disturbances, you know, people these days are more and more screwed up, if you may say so. You know, it all goes back to the mother. Yes, if people have not had a caring, loving, affectionate mother. See, I had the fortune, my mother never worked as long as we were in the house. She only started working when we left home to study. Then she went back to her profession. But all that time until I was nineteen, my mother was at home and she created such a nice atmosphere in the home. She really gave me my emotional strength, which I have to live the life I'm leading. I owe that to my mother. Yes. Yeah. So, I mean, it's a big topic and in my books I'm talking in all details about my most important role of being mother. In Baishnath life, mother comes straight after Krishna, comes mother. "Matte de Ropero, Pitto di Ropero", "Cia di Ropero, Arti di Ropero", or you who are from Indian, back to Samshur, you know? So, "Matte de Ropero" means "Be somebody for whom mother is like God", and then father is like God, teacher is like God and uninvited guest is like God. But mother comes first. You may know His Holiness Bhaktivas Amritamash. Anybody knows him? Yes. He once said this nice thing. He was saying, "A Sanjasi, everyone pays a license system, yes, except one person", who is that one person? Mother. Mother will not pay a license system. He will pay a license system. That's mother, you know? Yeah, all this knowledge is getting lost in forgotten, you know? Yes, the not children suffer if the mother is not there and as soon as a child feels my mother has something more important and more interesting in her life than caring for me. A child feels, yeah, a little neglected, pushed aside, you know? Yeah, so anyway, let's go back. Yes, so husband's duty is to provide nice ornaments, to pamper her, you know? According to his means, of course, he shouldn't go all in debt, you know, just to pamper the wife, then it's a little overboard, you know? But according to his means, you know? He should buy nice clothing and, and do decorations and, and give her the facilities she needs, you know? Yeah. And what else, something else also? Yeah?
They always like to calm, calm her mind, alleviate her fears.
Alleviate her fears, yeah? Yeah? A husband who takes the lead and is there and provides, protects, so then a woman also feels sheltered, you know? And whenever there is some anxieties, he wants to hear, he wants to hear, he wants to hear. We're sure, yes. Yeah, also, um, in other emotional support we can say that he takes her out to different events, you know? Or he goes shopping with her, he goes for walks in nature with her. Actually, I usually recommend that a husband should spend one hour per day quality time with his wife, where the wife knows "This is my time with my husband, where I can talk, you know, sweet nothings and we can go for walk or we can read something together or whatever". And especially when there's children, not only one hour per day, but half a day per week, should be the family day. You know, where husband, wife do something with the kids and, you know, also kids need to have a bit of fun, some recreation, going to the zoo or going swimming or aquarium or whatever. You know, some, something harmless which is not contaminating the consciousness or something. You know, I think going to the zoo is always good to look at all the species of life where we don't want to take birth and change Hare Krishna to the animals and all that, you know? Seeing how Krishna has so much creativity and fantasy and designing all the different bodies, you know? Yeah, so you can Krishnaize the fun, you know? Yes, some fun has to be there for the kids. Sometimes people are a little too narrow and it's only lecture, kid, and japa. You know? But kids also want to run and play and have some fun in the forest and, you know, and the parents should... And, you know, and the parents should also go along with it and stuff. It has to be nicely balanced, you know? So one hour per day, half an hour, half a day per week ideally, you know? Visiting friends who also have kids and, you know, all kinds of activities there, you know? And let me see what else, because I'm a little... Oh, yes.
Buy a bunch of flowers?
Yes, buying gifts, you know? Some flowers, some little earrings, whatever, some gifts, you know? Gifts are one of the loving exchanges, giving and accepting gifts. You know, so if a husband wants that the wife cooks nice, nice keshade and all that, so then he also, you know, has to reciprocate and give a little gift every night again. So that, that keeps a marriage relationship alive and nice, you know? But if we just get into some routine, where everybody is just doing their thing and husband and wife may hardly even talk to each other much or something, then easily it gets a little dry, you know? But being a little considerate and, you know, making a little surprise, the wife can also make a little surprise, make something special for him in the kitchen there, cook something special, what he really likes. And she, and he comes out with a little gift or something, you know? Yeah, it keeps it all loving and affectionate. And there is another thing, yes, brother?
The thing, the weight of a man's heart is stuck.
Yes, yes, very true. The weight of a man's heart is through the stomach. Yeah, that's why the cooking is a pretty important thing, you know? That's how we express and show our love and devotion and so on, you know? It all goes into the cooking. The mother's cooking is always considered the best. You know, the homemade mother's cooking, you know? Yes, and there is another thing too. Affection. Women need hugs and kisses. There's one interesting episode with Vohpart. Where one brother child got married. And after he was married for a while, Vohpart asked him, so how is your wife? Is she happy? And he said, no, Vohpart, not so much. And Vohpart said to him, you have to give her more affection. You must kiss her. Instruction from Vohpart, you must kiss her. And this family was completely shocked because Vohpart could see he still had his brother child routine there, you know? Yeah, and I mean, you're laughing, but sometimes we come across this and it's gone that we are a little imbalanced and we think, oh, hugs and kisses, this is all my, this is all subtle sex life and leads to more anyway and better not to have hugs and kisses at all. No, episode with Vohpart, it's in that book. You must kiss her, that's what Vohpart said. So let's remember that the husband-wife relationship is a conjugal relationship. It's not a brother-sister relationship. It is a conjugal relationship. And very clear, after thirty years of hugs and kisses, we will come naturally to the point where we feel, oh, it's enough now. No need anymore. And that's the vana pascha. So after the griha sascha is another ashram, vana pascha. So there, no more need for hugs and kisses. After thirty years of having had it, we naturally grow out of it, you know? It's a natural process. But see, because this vana pascha is not properly established, that's why easily we take elements from the vana pascha and squeeze it in into the griha sascha. And make the griha sascha all dry and renowned, no hugs and kisses. But now, in vana pascha, it's part of it all, you know? Because very easily, yeah, it becomes emotionally dry and unhealthy and will not be a good atmosphere for children to grow up in. If this intentionally dry and unhealthy and imbalanced and... Alright. Oh, yeah, of course, one more thing. I mean, as I'm saying, there's so many more things, but I have to condense it. But it is the husband's duty to give the wife children. Yeah. Sometimes we come across some immaturity issues. They're also, then we think, oh, children is all my, it's a distraction, an obstacle and a burden and all these things. But now, it's the opposite. If we take this role of bringing up children seriously, it puts a whole different dimension to married life, you know? If we invite a soul with Gavadan Samskar to take birth in our family, we can spend, you know, six months praying for a special soul to take birth, chanting some extra and then, and then on the day of conception, we should change fifty rounds for Vohpart's. So if we take this seriously, it's a whole different thing, my God. And it really helps husband and wife to become Krishna conscious. You know, the wife, the mother is the first guru already in the womb. The child hears everything. I once met a family in South India. She was telling me during her pregnancy, every day she was chanting the first five chapters of Bhagavad Gita, every day Sanskrit. And when I met them, their boy was five. And without any further training, when the parents chant these chapters and stop anywhere, he knows the next verse just by hearing in the womb. My God, I was blown away, you know? Of course, we all know Baladma, you heard in the womb, of course, Baladma would, why not? You know? But I wasn't clear in this, that this is still going on today. Yes, the child hears everything. So child raising starts before conception and during pregnancy. Child feels every motion, child gets the mother's consciousness. Yeah, because consciousness floods the body, goes in every cell of the body. Of course, the child, in her milk, was the mother's consciousness. So, my God, you know, being a mother is a most amazing service, yes? Because sometimes people say, no, we don't want children, we want to breed. Hey, that's the next ashram, that's the vana pascha. But in family life, you know, there should be children as far as possible. Of course, if nature doesn't arrange them what to do. But how else will we purify our sex desire? If we don't use it in Krishna service, you know? That's how we purify all the senses. You know, we use them in Krishna service. We eat Krishna bhushan, we don't say, oh, we just fast, we don't eat anything. No, we eat Krishna bhushan, you know? We use all the senses in Krishna service. All in sexes are meant to be with Krishna service to bring up Krishna conscious children. And if we do it properly, it helps both husband and wife to really become exemplary and, and, yeah, it's a very amazing way to actually make progress. We have to create a whole culture Bhakti in the home and, and, yes. Yeah, so and often, you know, sometimes the men, they're not so keen on having children are another one, more income I have to earn, less, less peace in the home. But now, you know, to fulfill a woman's emotional needs, that's also why a woman should have children, you know? Yes. That's Krishna's arrangement, you know? That this emotional need should be used in having children and bringing them up. Alright, let me see one more time. Yeah, alright, so it's getting late enough. So let me see if we have any questions.
Just, yeah, do you create karma if you don't have children?
Create karma?
If you don't have children?
Well, it's not a sinful activity not to have children.
You said you're fulfilling Krishna's desire to have children.
Well, see, it depends what you do with your sexes. If you don't have children, if you, if you use contraceptive or abortions, that's sinful. For that you will get karma. But then you can also say, well, if you don't want children, well, why getting married then? You may as well be a brother child then, you know? I mean, as...
You can love, you can love, you may want to have children, you may desire freedom, but you love the woman, so...
Well, desire freedom, see, that's exactly why we are in this material world because we desire freedom and independence, you know? So that's why we should be in one of the ashrams. Because each ashram teaches us to give up our independence. So there is no fifth bachelor ashram. Yes, do we have any, what are you, Russian speaking here? You speak Russian? Yes, you know, in Ukraine we were saying domachary. Domachary, doma, home, to live at home, doma. Domachary, that's the fifth ashram, you know, just to live with mama at home. So no room for domacharies. Yes, what else?
I have a question. So the Bhagavad Gita work that you just read, which says that in the basic law, there's divorce isn't really, it's kind of looked down upon and it doesn't exist and...
Yes, and not it looked down upon, it doesn't exist.
Yeah, it just doesn't exist.
Yes.
Woman should be submissive to her husband. But do you think, because we're in Kalju right now, I'm like you said, being submissive doesn't mean that you accept like physical or emotion abuse? But do you think because we're in Kalju, the men are so much in, like, have a very demonic nature that that's the reason why women don't want to submit to their, like, to their husbands? And do you think because the women aren't submitting and they're not passing their shakti on to them, men are becoming a more demonic? Do you think they're correlated to each other and it's just like a vicious cycle?
Um, yeah, you touched upon a few little things there. I mean, it's definitely not that the men are so demonic and that's why women don't want to submit to them. You know, I mean, then, then a woman, you know, we will, see, we women have to carefully choose, you know? So why is a woman marrying a demonic man, I'm wondering, you know? So that's why I put a whole matchmaking book here together. How to see that a man and woman are compatible. So we have to be intelligent, we will. On who to depend on, not on a man who is abusive. See, in this book is a whole chapter on hierarchy. It's an interesting topic. Hierarchy comes from Greek language and means divine order. So hierarchy is actually Krishna's order for protection. But on the top of the hierarchy is Krishna. And everybody understands themselves as servant of Krishna, protecting those below him. So now, if you remove Krishna from the top of the hierarchy, then what happens? Krishna's divine order turns into Krishna's exploitative order. Because everybody wants to take the position of Krishna and exploit, right? So, but the solution is to put Krishna back on the hierarchy, on the top of the hierarchy, not equality. And that's where the whole world goes wrong, you know? Just the fact that women were, were and have been and maybe still are abused and suppressed, that's how the equality and independence comes in. But that makes the woman's position even worse. So the solution is to put Krishna back on the hierarchy, top of the hierarchy. So it means practically for us women, we have to choose a husband who is god-conscious. So he will not misuse his superior position. Yeah, yes. But one thing is there, you know? Because, and I'm describing all this in the book, better get the book, you know? One thing is there, because we women tend to compete, that really frustrates a man completely, you know? Because he's not getting that shakti to be empowered. He cannot be the hero. And that makes his masculine energy come in an abusive and violent way towards women. You understand? And we can see this in India now, you know? War and abuse towards women is really increasing in India like anything. And I dare say, it's connected with the fact that the women are more independent and they want to be the hero themselves. And that brings that frustration in me, you know? That, that his masculine energy goes in a violent way towards women because he can't protect her anymore. He lost his chivalrous and heroic task of protecting a woman, you know? Yes, that's what's happening. So it's all, all pretty interesting, you know? Yes. Also, one more thing. I read some research that there has been some research made, what effect it has when young boys are early separated from the mother. And they were saying that boys have by nature a more aggressive mood of anger. I suppose it is because they are meant to protect them and, and fight. So there has to be some, some more aggression in a man, you know? That fighting anger spirit. So, and they were saying, a boy, a small boy, boy under five or six, needs a mother to manage his anger. To manage and control his anger. And if a boy doesn't have that mother to do that, play that role, that's what makes him more violent. Yeah. For the rest of his life, damages him, that he can't control his anger. And that could also lead to the fact of domestic violence. Again, goes back to the mother. You know? All these things go back to the mother. For men, it's also proven fact that if they haven't had that loving, caring mother, they can't control their senses so easily. And all these sexual provisions and stuff, you know, which people have these days. Also goes back to the mother. Yes. Just shows how important this role of mother is, you know?
I think the father is also to blame.
Well, of course, father also, I mean, I have a fifteen-hour kids' course here, which I give in my book, but I can't get into this now. Of course, fathers also play their role and this and that. But mothers are more important than fathers, especially in the first five, six years, you know? Yes?
So what can a man do, like, in order to continue the same here? Like, let's say, for example, like, I don't have that with my wife, but like, in the argument, sometimes she started acting like a man and that's kind of like brings down the anger in me and what can I do to continue?
Yeah. Well, she should read that book. There's all, I mean, see, in, in some parts of the world, these are all pretty controversial topics. But when you look at the Bhagavad Gita, there is much more instruction given about woman's behavior than about men's. And sometimes, you know, the women get agitated, always, always ask them, it's because we price such an important role, we have this shakhi. And if we do the wrong thing, you know, we can create havoc, we can spoil everything. And there is very strong words in the Bhagavad Gita that a woman should not speak harsh and insulting words, you know. And there is a quote where Parvati says, "Why is constitutional, why is very constitutional man wants to be in a superior position?" And by her constitutional position, she is in a subordinate and weaker position. And this must be observed. So in other words, a woman has to treat her husband like a senior. So, and vice versa, etiquette says, "A senior, you don't instruct, you don't argue back, you don't shout and scream at the senior." Say, with the parents by the way. Even the father, parents are not the values, so we have to treat them as our seniors, they are our elders. We're not meant to instruct them and correct them and argue with them and answer back with them. That's why often we the values have tense relationships with our parents because we are the ones who don't follow the vice of etiquette. Yes, yes, you know. We don't know because this is not preached today anymore. People find it normal to argue with the parents and answer back to them and all that. But now, it's actually against vice versa, etiquette, what is senior, you don't talk like that. So when the wife should also treat the husband as a senior. You know, but because husband-wife relationship so much over familiarity comes in. Because you're so close, you're seated every day, you know, it's all the weaknesses. Very easily, we lose respect and we take each other lightly and cheaply. And then we throw all kinds of stuff on each other's heads, you know, verbally, physically, you know, and it's all this over familiarity, you know. So respect has to be there, yes. And a wife, yeah, should be, yeah, should be trained in these things, you know. Often, we are not trained, we don't know, you know, we don't even realize, you know. Chances, he? Well, yes, but, you know, I mean, usually, see, my experience really is, and that's why Bhagavad Gita stresses the woman's behavior so much. Because we women are so powerful, if we do the right thing, then usually the man responds in the right way if they have, you know, some, some, something good in their hearts, you know. But if we women behave, you know, inappropriately, it's very different, difficult for a man to deal with it.
Buy her a book, buy her a book.
Yeah, that's why we women have to, have to be trained and we have to know what, how, what to do and what not to do in order to make the marriage work, you know. Yeah, but a man, of course, also has to know what to do. He also, the emotional care often the men are lacking in this and they don't know and, you know. Yeah, I mean, ultimately, any marriage problem can be solved if both have a mentor. If both are willing to work on themselves rather than pointing the finger at the other person and accept guidance. And there the men often lack a little bit. The women are more ready to open their mind and ask for guidance. But the men often don't want to, you know, take guidance and share their heart and, and, yeah, approach somebody, you know, for help. Often the men think, don't even see there's a problem, you know. But the women are more eager to take guidance. So if both can take guidance from a mentor and are ready to work on themselves rather than blaming the other person, then any marriage problem can be solved, yeah. Mentorship is the key, you know. Yes. To have this more experienced, well-wishing friend where we can share our struggles, the person keeps it confidential and the person is more experienced and can tell us where both have to work on, you know. Because that's often what happens in married life, that we just blame the other person and that's again, false ego thing, the meeting, wine, right? It's only the other person, he or she is doing everything wrong. You know, that's one mechanism how to protect the false ego, you know. Let me say quickly a few words before you rush into this, in case you haven't seen the books yet. So it's built for culture, Krishna's divine system. Today's discussion was part of this book, Tractor Sports Cart, Different Natures, How We Women Are Menteled, Powered, and Men. It's much more in this book than I could share in this session, you know. And even though the whole book is about women, in India, they use this book as a handbook for women's child training. Yeah, so that the man understand what an important role we women are meant to play. Also for teenage girls, very important book, you know. Yeah, because it's all the, you know, traditional qualities of a woman are described, chastity, shameless and more deeper, you know, explained. I share some stories from Bangladesh too, this, everything more and so on, you know. So teenage girls should read this, yeah. Actually, every woman who wants to have harmonious relationships with men in her life should read this book. And then the man who wants to get the support and empowerment of the women should also read it. And that book I have also available in Russian. So then the next one, sheltering relationships, that's about the importance of having a mentor. That without having a mentor and eventually becoming one to others, we actually cannot make advancement. We easily stay in our comfort zone, we leave it all as it is. And then we become stagnant, we don't go anywhere. You know, and then we can be, you know, for thirty years, we can come every week to, every Sunday to the Sunday program. But nothing really transforms, nothing changes, you know. We just staying on the spot. There's also the topic of envy in that, which we were discussing on Sunday, how envy manifests towards teenagers, teenagers, culture of respect, culture of correcting others, so many important things. And I have that book also in Russian, I need these books in English and Russian. So then, the false ego are constant companion and troublemaker. Also very insightful, married life can be a battlefield of faulty egos. Who is right, who is wrong, just see, I told you, and, and, you know. Or when we get offended, so often that happens. What is it? False ego, crying for justice and fairness. And there's also a whole chapter on changing the homine. Because as I mentioned, I conduct homine retreats. So how to change that it dissolves and subdues the false ego rather than feeding and boosting it in Japan, in Kia. So then we have, entering the real ashram, that's a handbook for matchmaking. How to see that a man and a woman are compatible. Because especially in India, people, when they look at caste and money and they often don't give people the time to actually talk, you know. Parents only meet two times, half an hour, and the deal is made. And then the young folks then get the chance to discuss things. So there's a whole list of all the two hundred topics which a man and a woman should discuss with cool hair, without pink glasses. That's why I made it pink. So it's an important book for all those who are not married yet, for parents who want to help their children find a man or for any mentor, anybody who wants to serve the devotees by finding a match. And last but not least, family life is an ashram secrets of success. So there's so many things about family life. I mean, today, we only touched upon a few other things. And there's also a whole chapter on physical intimacy in marriage. How to lift the principle of no less sex life. There's also a bit of confusion over this. And I did some research and I came across interesting episodes with Parvati, where he says things which hardly anybody has heard. Where people are surprised, oh, really, Parvati said that? Oh, wow. You know, yes. So I hope this book will make our family life more Krishna-conscious and at the same time emotionally more balanced and healthy, yes. So if anybody of you wants books, quite a few people bought some on Sunday. These three books are fifteen euros each, these are ten euros. So if you get the whole set, sixty-five euros. Or you can just get one or two or whatever you want. So today's your very last chance, tomorrow I'm flying out. Okay, so thank you so much for your kind attention. I didn't even expect so many people to turn up, to be honest, on a working day. So this is very encouraging to me that you came. Thank you, Shilpa Bhattacharya. Samaradakshmi. Go up in. Yeah, so if anybody wants some books, please come up to me right now. Oh, what about, where is Henon? Where is the card reader? Oh, God. Where is Cham? No, 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 I'm leaving tomorrow, you know, so, but right now... Yeah, but who, who pays? Where, where is Cham Prabhu? There was one, but it was supposed to be the card reader. Yeah, I mean, see, I don't like to rely on these things, you know. Better you go to the IT mission or get Cham Prabhu. Where is he? He said he is in the temple, he is doing some chores. So please don't get him. Okay?
Because I did the last step in the false ignorance and you're leaving tomorrow.
Um, what do you mean? You, you've put your name under this already?
No, because, because I'm traveling, so I don't know how I'm gonna be able to get it. I didn't do it because I don't know where I'm gonna be, I don't live here though.
Oh, that's fine. You're not living here and you want the false ego.
Can we get the last copy?
Yes.
Hare Krishna. So we would like to thank Grace Devaki Devadasa Mataji for giving us her association. It was really eye-opening and it was really, you know, it cleansed a lot of our false ego kind of. We learned a lot. So we would like to have more of our associations as she comes again and again. So we'd like to thank her by three times telling, "Hare Krishna." Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna. Thank you, Hare Krishna. And we'd like to have Gauri, you know, so our devotees can join.
Can we get me a bit of traffic, we'll just start now, the talk's about here.
Okay, okay.
So we are here, committed.
Okay.
Because it's getting late, people wanna go home. If you start singing now, it will be difficult.
Okay.
Also, Gauri is not on Tuesday, is not?
No, it's on, yeah, yeah.
Really?
Yeah, it's on, yeah, yeah.
Oh, but see, usually when people have a seminar, they have the five arti with our Kirtan. Because Kita is also Kirtan.